Pump any effluent, treated effluent out to your sprayfield systems. So speaking with city staff, you know, we're trying to develop a way to replace the current filters now with a new filter system that would allow them to push more flow through the lagoon, through your filter system, and also pump that effluent, treated effluent out to your effluent disposal system. Task five is, has to do with your solid handling facility, which there's not one right now on site at the water facility. Right now, ferret sludge is pumped to the lagoon system, which is having some impact on some of the treatment at the lagoon, which is going hand in hand with your filter system, causing some of the blinding to occur. Uh, so we were work on implementing a solid handling, handling facility at the water plant where ferret sludge from the water plant will stay over on the water side. Uh, de-water that sludge, dry it out and dispose of that um, at a selected landfill. We would work hand in hand with staff on that to see where that um, de-watered ferret sludge, we need to get disposed of that. Task six, uh, again, that would be the new treatment run uh, that's being mandated by DEP. You know, they're requesting that the lagoon be decommissioned. And a whole new biological nutrient removal system will be implemented on site. Again, working with city staff, we felt like a four point O NGD plant would be sufficient uh, for treatment capacity now and also out uh, for future build out based on a development that's supposed to occur in this area. Last task, which we kind of goes hand in hand again with task six, it's going to be your decommissioning of your lagoon. Once the construction of the plan occurs and everything's finalized, we're able to push uh, domestic flow through the new treatment plant. We would work on decommissioning the lagoon, uh, pumping water out of there through the new treatment process, treat that and dispose of that at your effluent disposal site. And again, kind of laid out the task here with the breakdown, this are just estimated construction costs that kind of go uh, with each of these tasks. You know, getting task four to task seven, those would be ones where the city would need to uh, bid out those projects or see uh, bids from contractors and um, go through a construction phase. Uh, we have the estimated construction start date for those. Again, those aren't set in stone, those are kind of discussed with staff on what we thought uh, would occur. And kind of the priority of them uh, to occur. And then they kind of vary in, you'll have your FDP consent order, which are, those are mandated dates that each of these tasks have to be completed by. You can kind of see, I think the city's done a great job of staying on top of all this. You can see twenty thirty three is when the new plan needs to be put in place. And we're kind of anticipating, you know, permitting goes well, securing the funds go accordingly, you know, it's going to be starting in twenty twenty eight. Giving you ample time to construct a new plan and then decommission the lagoon as necessary. We've got some site plans and proposed uh, site plans for y'all to look at if you have any questions on that or any of these tasks, you know, that's why we're here. Feel free to ask any questions.
Let me ask you one on task four. The uh, construction cost on that, three and a half to four million dollars. And that new filtration system will be uh, uh, used in the new treatment facility. Is that correct? Or is that just fixing something that we need fixing now and we're going to spend that money and then it's not going to be used?
The, the filter system is going to help the plant now, and then it's going to be compatible as well to be worked in with the new plant. So during the design of that, you know, we will have a preliminary hydraulics uh, put together for the new plan. And we would want to make sure that this new system here is going to fit in within that hydraulic profile of the new plant. Again, that's going to give the city the best bang for their buck where you're not spending money now and then have to spend it later again to put in a new filter system. So yes, sir, it's going to work for now and later.
And will the spray fields be decommissioned?
Uh, spray fields will not be decommissioned. You'll need some kind of effluent disposal for that. Um, for now and later, when we go to a four point O NGD plant, uh, you would need four point O effluent disposal, and that could be through grids, through spray field, a combination of both. Or if there's another effluent disposal mechanism, the city would like to look at, you know, public access reuse or other kind of technology, we can look that route as well. But right now, you know, we're, I think right now we've got spray fields and grids, so just finding adequate space and acreage to accommodate that four point O NGD is what the city would need to be looking at.
Okay.
We're doing expansion on the spray field now. Uh, basically with your current permitting, I believe that gets us to one point nine five, somewhere in that area where we'll be at. Uh, hopefully within a few months. Now, there's some other opportunities with this type of plant that you can go back and make some uh, addition to the current layout that you have. But to get to four point O, we would be, we would be about one NGD short, somewhere in that area. And we would need expanded property on there some point down the future, down the road.
How many more acres?
That, let's see, we got how many acres now?
Got seventy eight now, but we uh, this, what we're clearing is almost twenty. So you're probably close to another fifty acres, somewhere forty, fifty acres.
Around the hundred.
Percolation rate of the property.
Well, I think it's important before you move forward on a plant, you know, at that particular location is to be assured that we can get the additional acreage from, I guess it's Deseret.
Same good company has enjoying property on there. I know mayor had different meetings with St. Joe Company on other issues. And one thing we've mentioned in the past is keep this in mind uh, that at some point in the future, the city may need some additional spray field.
Yeah, I, I just think that that's, uh, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves by focusing on a plant, and then we have nowhere to, for the additional spray fields. And we're right back to where we currently are with wanting to expand. I think we need to have, you know, uh, what are we leasing that now?
You have a hundred year with.
Hundred year, I just think we should ask for another maybe two hundred acres.
He uh, when we met with George and brought that, that was kind of a sidebar. He indicated that would be our problem, but things change, the times change, and so it may not be available now, so he was actually right. We need to try to go ahead and go ahead and secure it and uh, and I'm sure they'll have a proviso in there that if we don't use it for that, that it'll just go right back to them if we don't use it.
Both, yeah, yeah.
So.
You mentioned something about the, the effluent discharge. So as you're, this water would be treated water that you're spraying now.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned something about recyclable type water, or I'm, I'm just thinking, we're, we're talking about we're, we're putting in uh,
Redwater.
Splash pads and stuff like that. Is that something?
Yeah, I mean.
That would fit with that?
Public access reuse, I think is what the term to refer to, reuse, yes. I mean, that's, you know, there's effluent limits that need to meet that, uh, that be able to produce, you know, what they're calling public access part three to discharge out into your discharge system. Uh, not only that's a route, as of right now, the city has in place. But it doesn't mean you can't start putting purple pipe in place for you to have that ability, or as you mentioned, there's gray use now. I don't know what kind of facilities, if they're industrial or prisons or anything along those lines that could take in uh, gray water, but that's also another option as well. Those are just kind of the methods of how the city wants to move forward with and uh, just knowing what the city would like to move forward, we can also, you know, help along the way and give some guidance and plan accordingly for when this expansion does occur.
Mr. Kerrigan, on that line, when, when the spray fields were acquired years ago, part of that plan was for reuse, that was going to be potentially a golf course, that was going to be part of Windmont Beach and that area. So that was part of it there. Now, as far as our daily flows today, what are we, what are we running at today?
Right at one point two.
That's kind of where we're at today. So, so that shows you how much rain before you get to that point, but if you're going to build a new plant, you got to think about, you know, a twenty twenty five.
And, and we, county owns a golf course, I mean, but it's quite a, I don't know how many miles uh, from the treatment plant, but uh, it wouldn't have to go under the canal, it's, you know, back this way. So that is a potential use for, because they're monitored, because everything they use out of that for into a basically holding pond.
When we've seen plants as well that we work, would work with now and done in the past, I mean, it's an effluent disposal method, it's golf courses. Utilize that in essence as spray field.
Do you think that would be sufficient to handle, handle the plant, or would we have to have other areas that dispose of it?
You know, and I don't want to say you can't handle it, that's all it would come down to doing a bounding analysis at the golf course to kind of see what your percolation rate is and, you know, how much flow you can dispose onto the site. So without knowing that information, I wouldn't be able to tell you right now if it could. It's a, you know, given where its location may be, if it's a sandy area, there's a good chance, you know, you could discharge more onto the golf course site.
I think that would be of, if St. Joe, which I guess we could find out from George. I know there's been a lot of talk back and forth on whether they will or won't put in a new golf course. I mean, that would make sense from a location that sits within the city, it's not going to the county, and it's very sandy.
They talked about it a lot off and on.
Yeah, I haven't heard any more talk about it lately, but.
But that was an initial plan for future disposal.
And that's just, they keep in mind, I mean, even with the construction of a four point O NGD, I do think it's smart to have an idea of where you could dispose four point O NGD at. Um, but if there was struggles or complications on making that work, you know, you would be flow limited. I think you said you're at one point.
Uh, we're at two now.
So I mean, if you got up to two and the plant was rated at four point NGD, you know, it had the treatment capacity for four, but you would be flow limited and only be able to push two through there and then dispose of it too. So you'll have some kind of time if that were to occur, but to your point, I do agree that it's, it's, it's smart to start looking now on where these potential disposal sites could be to handle a four point O NGD.
And I guess the next question is, we all know the county is putting in water and wastewater treats. What is the effect of what they're doing as the, as you roll off extraterritorial water that we supply right now to these places? That pool off, how is that going to affect our discharge? What, what do we have right now currently uh, as far as water production? As far as water consumption?
Uh, we have a little over six thousand total customers on there.
How many are outside the city?
Outside the city, about, about half.
So if, and when the county goes with their water and their wastewater treatment plant, are there, is it a requirement that a homeowner in St. Joe Beach would switch to the county? Or is that going to, in other words, will they be required to switch to their system?
We've got a memorandum of understanding, I believe, with the county from a while back that they would not encroach on our service area that we currently have. So uh, what that means when you get down to the weeds, I, I don't know.
It's been interpreted in a couple of ways.
No, I'm sure. I've heard it interpreted a couple of ways.
Yeah.
I'm just, yeah, trying to think towards the future of us trying to build a bigger plant to sustain what we're doing, but we also are in a small geographical footprint of which the county now is going to be doing the exact same thing we are.
Well, I can say, because I, I spoke both to Michael Hammond, the county administrator, and to uh, Placemont with the assistant county administrator. And they would be interested in knowing what the, what the city's future plans are. Uh, and I got the same message. They plan to build a new, much smaller wastewater treatment plant um, somewhere in the area of uh, the land, the land that old man bought. They got plenty of property, I think, for uh, spray fields. And I, I, I think that that's probably a possibility that we can't rule out till we find out is that a benefit to the county, a benefit to the city, and then ultimately, the most important part is, is a benefit to our residents. Uh, I, I'm open to whatever gives us better water, better rates and better service, open water and sewer. So I think this is step one, but we have to at least be open to the idea of partnering with the county. County has figured out one very important uh, aspect of this whole issue, and that's funding. We failed miserably as a city in securing the funding. And that's just what I've seen since I've sat in this chair. Uh, whereas the county has done a very successful job in securing funding. And uh, I, I don't know what the answer to that is.
And it really, it goes right down, this maybe getting off the subject just a little bit, but not totally. It goes right down to the, in the recent letter we got from the county that, that Jeremy O'Barr penned and it talked about communication in there three or four times about communication between the city and the county. And, and hey, I think we're all open to sit down in a room together, but they've never communicated with the city uh, their plans, which would have been nice if it would, it would help us all to work together. But I, I think the communication works both ways, and I'm, I'm afraid those two important items have never been uh, discussed with us in an open forum, so we need to do that, certainly. But anyway, all right.
Mayor, looking back, kind of a synopsis of what you have on seven tasks you have before you. If you look at task one through seven, one, currently right now, one through five is a plan. You look at the filtration system, looking at trying to handle the ferret over come, the slugs coming from the, from the water plant. Where the rubber is the road is task number six on final, kind of doing a new plan. So we've started looking at funding, trying to figure out how in the world we would handle that at this point in time. We've gotten in touch with SRF, we made a phone call to state revolving fund. They've helped us out tremendously on some of these others. They're long slash grants, okay? Try to find out the funding and when the next available cycle is. The next available cycle is not to the fall. We thought usually they had a quarterly meeting, you had quarterly money, so we could go ahead and start applying for this funding on it. So we've got to make some decisions coming up shortly on there, okay? Do we go ahead and apply for funding for the whole shebang on there? And try to figure out how in the world we would even try to pay for that at some point, or do we go ahead and break this thing up? Because Kevin and Larry, and Kevin and Joe, they need help being able to get that level down and start with. This filtration system will help the daily operation, okay? That is going to be task number four. And then task number five, it's also a requirement from DEP. They're also telling us we need to uh, get a handle on the ferret coming to your plant at six. And somewhere across the middle, we've got to have a discussion now that we've got this out here, we've got a, a pretty good roadmap. We've got to have that discussion to DEP, okay? Are they going to require all these items in this consent order, or are they going now? Because we don't have the funding. We don't have eighty, ninety, hundred million dollars to do this. So is DEP going to come back and say, you are going to have to do all this stuff? And if so, where are we going to get the money? Or are they going to be able to reduce the scope of work on this consent order? And that's what mayor was alluding to at some point. I told the Clark Smith the other day, we all need to have a meeting in, in Pensacola or Tallahassee. You really have a hard look at this now that we, now basketball Donald has put in the paper as to what it's going to truly cost to do this. Because the citizens of Port St. Joe can't afford to pay a hundred million dollars. We couldn't, we couldn't pay our sewer bill.
That's, that's the challenges we're up against.
Some of these uh, estimated construction start dates, you got October twenty five on the filtration system, which is a four million dollar bogey sitting there.
And you're. Yeah, and that's, you know, we kind of talked with Jim and them, I know this is kind of one of the, what he kind of just mentioned there, how are we going to move forward? We're going to break this out? Is this some city is going to, you know, pull out some fund? I'm not sure. But, you know, this was again, kind of just a stab at it, uh, to see where we would go. Um, if it was breaking out, or if it was kept in a lump sum, if it was kept in a lump sum, we understood that, you know, the construction day wouldn't start there, but we would have to wait till the fall. Of course, to even safely secure funding for the filter system. So that was kind of just where we put on there for that.
Right. Discuss the possibility of applying for Triumph Fund.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I mean, the, the, if you look at the what the Triumph, Triumph Fund was for, I mean, we're close enough to a canal system and everything else, I mean, it should help with the Clean Water Act that was passed.
Well, I know that possibly, you know, when they first started handing out funds and, and I, I know that things have changed as far as the requirements, even be eligible for their funding. Uh, they were real tight about, you know, jobs. I mean, jobs that you create, you had to claw, uh, clawback clause and all those things, but I have seen uh, where Triumph has actually funded uh, development type work in infrastructure and, and it was somewhere around Waculla. And I, I'm thinking, well, once they have opened the door for that type of uh, money to be funded for a plant like that, I think that same argument would be made for city of St. Joe. Uh, has, it has nothing to do with jobs necessarily, it has to do with maintaining the community. So I, I think we should assign someone today to be responsible for applying to that Triumph Fund. I mean.
I mean, at, at the end of the day, it does affect jobs.
Mayor, we've had a discussion before with Triumph, trying to find something in there. We haven't had much success, but I do know Clark Smith uh, had a meeting with Triumph Board staff a couple of weeks ago. And I did send this to him as well yesterday, so he's got this, what we're looking at on funding on there. So if you like what I'll do is I'll follow back up with him to see if he thinks that Triumph is, is an avenue, because I know he did meet with those folks.
Well, I don't really want to know what he thinks. I want to know what Triumph thinks. The way you know what they think is get on their agenda in the form of an application. I think we need to focus on not let one group thinks. I want to focus on letting that get to Triumph, so.
He, he's got good uh, uh, connections with the uh, executive director of Triumph. And I'm, I feel like that's, you know, from past employment years and past service and uh, uh, bureaus in Tallahassee. So, so uh, I, I think if you push him to maybe give us somewhat of a, an answer shortly, uh, we'd know, we'd either try it or don't try it. Now, what, Tyler, what's your experience or feelings about our success with uh, that type application? You talk Triumph.
Triumph, uh, I mean, like you said, I know Waculla County, they have been successful through Triumph. I want to, I want to say maybe Gulf Breeze maybe has some success too with Triumph as well, that helps support some of their uh, plant, uh, plant expansion work, but like you mentioned, I mean, it's a, it's a door that's been opened. It's probably not a bad idea to see if that's an avenue that, you know, maybe the city's successful at going after and obtaining.
Yeah, and we just acquired a brand right from Panama City. I don't know if he's had any experience with Triumph or.
Yeah, yeah. Can you send him that also that you sent Carl?
Yeah, that'd be a good test run.
Yep, absolutely. And they tell him to get in contact with Clark immediately, that this is, you know, a priority for us now.
What do we have funding available currently today? Like Kevin, I, I see that we asked for we need four million dollars. What do we have of that four million to at least accomplish task four?
So that's kind of my idea.
To kind of stay ahead of the, the DEP.
And I think the, the, what the idea of going to speak with DEP is, I mean, that, that would help. Because that needs to happen pretty quick. Touch one more, because I didn't want to be transparent, I want to make sure task four isn't an item specifically listed on the consent order, but it will go hand in hand with task six. You're eventually going to have a new filter system, but the thought was, you know, to get a filter now at the plant would help them from an O N N perspective and a daily production. So again, I just want to be transparent, task four is not a consent order item.
Okay, thank you, yeah. So Kevin, a couple of questions. One, will the filter system help your day-to-day operations?
Yes.
So we need to focus on that currently?
Correct.
Okay, and how much money do you have in your department set aside for the filter project?
I think we got, Jim, we got a million, between a million and a billion five. I think initially, if we go back, Mike's not here, he's tied up now with a hundred. Uh, but roughly, we have, we stuffed back about a one point five million dollars, part of that was the bar screens and some of those upgrades. So let's say we've got a million dollars there, but you also have your impact fees that are sitting out there, funds that are available. So we could come up with a couple of million dollars. But thinking with, as I said earlier, to get through task five is doable if you could acquire SRF money. SRF is usually a sixty forty, so if you did that, that would, you would be able to, to be able to place that funds on there to be able to tackle that. It's when you get down to building a new plant, because he needs to be able to run that plant today and be able to get those levels down and not have to worry every summer every time they get rain. Right now, you can't do that.
And if we could get DEP to, to come off or at least give us more time until funding is acquired to build this new plant, that would at least allow these guys to have day-to-day operations that would be.
Yes, yes. Task four is knee drop it. So I've been steady pushing, that's why Tyler, it could be difficult, I've been driving to get filtration. Uh, because that's our Achilles' heel.
Jim, when you say with FRS revolving fund, uh, when you say sixty forty, meaning it's a, how much of a grant, how much of a?
Currently, what we're seeing right now, most of the stuff, the ones that we've been working off of recently, is sixty percent loan, forty percent grant. And the interest rates have been coming in about one point five percent. That's why we went there, so is.
It's on a, it's on a four million dollar project. If we were able to break that out, if they covered forty, we would have to come up with two point six million.
Right, yes.
So. And we have approximately one, one point five set aside. Now you have some impact fee money.
So it's definitely doable to get through task five. Now, when you start talking about task six and going out for a sixty forty on eighty, ninety million dollars, no, sir. You know, that's a good start, but it's not going to be enough money for us to go cover the cost. Plus, you got to remember too, the backside of this thing, when you put, let's say if we got this thing paid for a hundred percent for the city. Explain to gentlemen what it costs to run these plants?
So it takes a lot more power, uh, about six hundred percent of what we're running there. So, you know, these new plants, it takes a lot of energy. Part of the design, and when we went through all the design phases, was it takes that into account. So the, the type of processing we do, um, and what it takes to run it is part of the factor we've used to get to this type of facility. So it's about as, it's about as cheap as it gets, and it's still expensive. So we still got to think just running this thing is going to take more money than we've, hasn't paid in a long, long time. From a, from a power standpoint?
And it has to run, I mean, days in. But you, you run it all the time.
Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Good old ships.
Seven days a week.
Your personnel takes time off. You got extra personnel and extra power. And personnel is also maintenance. So there, there, it takes more to run the newer plants.
And you said six hundred percent?
About, that's a rough estimate I've got as far as what we are now and our power bills.
Yeah.
Now, like the solar power we put in years ago, um, which, you know, those units are paid for, we pay eighteen thousand dollars a annual for maintenance on those things, but, so we don't have that kind of power bill. So we've been able to cut all of this back, but it's all coming back, all this big power bill stuff, it's going to be back as soon as you get into this type of plant. But these facilities are just expensive to run.
Is the new plant a lot smaller than what we currently are operating, the size of the facility?
Uh, capacity wise, you, it, uh, it would be more of a, well, because you got those two existing clarifiers there, but those are out of service now. Uh, so whatever the capacity is, uh, really through the filter, then chlorine contact chambers, kind of what you're able to treat, dispose of. So the plant itself would have a higher capacity, I would assume, than what it's right now.
I'm talking about the footprint of the property. Do we gain more space? I'm talking about the footprint of the property. Do we gain more space for maybe solar panels? Or do we lose space with a new construction?
Well, on that poster board right there, you can see those existing clarifiers, you know, the plant's going to be everything to the right of it.
Okay.
But, you know, with our call system, so we did an evaluation to see if those two existing tanks could be repurposed and used. Uh, structural now, a structural engineer did their analysis. Um, you know, the recommendation was, you know, they probably can be repurposed. You could put money into it, they're rehabbed, but just the cost of rehab structures of that size, you know, you probably get more bank for your bug just to make a new one. So. In essence, I mean, if the city wanted to, there could be a decommission of those two tanks. I mean, there's available land there. You want to do some kind of solar power for them.
Yeah. So we, if we get permission, we could fill them in with dark, who wanted to add the additional space.
You could. Basically.
No, no, uh, clarifier.
Oh, clarifier. And the game's a big question mark too, you know, DEP right now saying that we've got to do away with that again. How does that kind of look? In the days, it's going to be filled in, is it going to be repurposed? Is it? Can we go to half that size? It's seventy acres. That's a huge footprint of that plant now. Another thing too is revenue loss. When you go to this high service treatment plant, oh, we make roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year from all the trucks that come in, from all the porters and everything. Can that be used with this new plant? You'd have to build the receiving station, cause the septic trucks tear up the new plant. And they, that's why you don't see these septic receiving stations all over the state. Because they're really, really hard. Those, the, the porta potties are really hard on the new processing. So there's only a few that accept, but that's why we've done so well. The plant now as it sits is pretty much low cost. We lose three hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue, plus you tackle all the new power. Plus the manpower run, these are all things that we've got to think about.
I don't, I don't see how, how we're going to build and pass it on to the customer.
But now a new plant, brand new plant, is an AWT type plant. That's all they're building now. Is that correct? Um, if you built, went to a whole nother area, we talked about the county, went to a whole nother area and built a plant, would it be a twenty-four, seven operation type plant? That has to run twenty-four, seven with.
You're saying if we, if it's on this site here, we're.
Well, I'm just saying just have a clean slate. And we, and go out and build a brand new plant, just decommission this whole scenario, go out, build a brand new plant. I assume it's an AWT type plant, which from my understanding from Kevin, that it's, uh, more expensive to run one of those types than it is what we've got now.
Well, we're, we're designing it to AWT if those limits are to be imposed on the city at a later date. You know, our thought moving forward, we want to keep the limits you have right now. There, if the state's not being stringent on the city, they'll have more strict limits, we're not going to ask for that unless they impose it later. Uh, so our plant would have the capability for AWT treatment, uh, but it would still, when it's all up and running, it would still be treating to those limits they are today. Uh, but you are right. If it is imposed where we got to have AWT discharge limits, uh, your, your cost is going to increase due to the amount of energy needed in order to meet those stringent parameters.
Okay. Complicated, yes. That's, that's why we're here today and we want to know what we know. You're right.
And just real quick, I think you said about the site layout. You look at figure two, uh, that you have in your notebook. It's one of these figures over here. It kind of gives you an idea of the site layout. Doesn't have an aerial view, but you can see the existing clarifier, one and two, see how the site's kind of built out to the right. And keep in mind, we were, you know, thought was one, maybe we could repurpose these clarifiers, which is why they've been left here. And two, the cost of demo these is just additional cost. So, you know, that's why at the time we're, you know, suggested leaving those for the time being. And that has to do more or less cost savings. But to your point, you know, if you wanted to make available land there for solar panels or things like that, of course, the city has the option to take those structures out and then have land there if they wanted to incorporate some kind of energy producer, solar panels, et cetera.
The modified drying bed pump station, is that the drying bed for the ferret that's coming from the water plant or not?
Uh, no, sir.
That will be on their side then. Okay. All right. Got you. I got you. Okay. Well, we got you. But a good plan. If it'll satisfy DEP, if we can make it work efficiently, all of the above, uh, I think.
Well, what was their response to the invite to attend this workshop?
No response.
I got no response.
So you got a, uh, agency for the state of Florida that is tasked with protecting the environment in the state of Florida. Here we are discussing an outdated wastewater plant. Probably the only one that has a loo of this size or anywhere near it.
Last one in the state, I think.
Yes. Yeah. And we sit a few hundred yards from one of the only pristine labeled waterways in the whole state of Florida, and they don't even choose to come and give us guidance, you know, food and suggestions. I think we definitely should start with a letter to the governor's staff, the governor's office, our representatives, and to the head of DEP and tell them we invited them. We spent, what did we spend just on this study? A million dollars? Yeah, what, you know, we've already shown that we're trying to stay ahead of the plan. Do what we need to do to protect the community and, uh, our, our St. Joseph Bay. And the very group that tasked through the governor, through the legislature to help not only make rules, but make suggestions and actually have funding mechanisms. And they just choose to not even respond.
Well, you guys want me to, I'll work on a letter from now on next Tuesday to let you go over and see what you think.
Absolutely.
We'll, uh, we'll try to get some attention somehow, but.
And the thing that even aggravates me beyond that stage is the county was able to receive, I believe it was thirty million dollars straight from the, uh, comptroller for the financial, Jimmy Patrals' office. He oversees quite a bit. Thirty million dollars. And at the time they received the thirty million, I don't even know that they had plans for a location for the possibility of a wastewater plant. That goes back to what I'm saying. They've been very successful. Whereas we will never offer thirty million. We already have a plant that's under guidelines of DEP. Uh, something's just not right here.
The biggest question is how they got the grant when they had no customers. We didn't have a plant with no customers. That's, I don't know what the grant application said, but that, that's the biggest head scratcher, but that's, these guys don't need to hear all our dirty laundry here. But it does help you understand that, that we're, we're in a pickle.
Yes, sir.
We're in a big vehicle and we certainly appreciate what you've got as it done, even though we paid you to do it, it's still a, a nice layout of what we've got to do based on our consent order. And, uh, at least we have to show them we're moving forward. And, uh, so, so.
And that, and this is what, I mean, this is critical in us going after funding. You have to have a roadmap. You have to address the problems that they identified. We have gone in, had a study done. I think now with this, we really have to put the pressure, like Scott said, on our lobbyists and our grant writing and stuff, to go after these different departments through Triumph, you know, Triumph and through Clean Water Initiative Acts and take every angle we can to secure the funding so that it's, this, this does not become an impact on citizens of, or St. Joe.
Yes, sir. I think you're spot on. I think the next step we need to do, we need to, we need to ask Triumph for the money. I think that's one option right on there. Let's also apply to SRF for funding on those two. Let's keep moving through with funding. Let's get something set up with the DEP office in there to, to sit down with these folks to tell them what we're up against and how we're going to pay them.
You know, what's frustrating very much about DEP is, is they put this consent order on us. We applied for a grant to DEP, a small grant, I believe, to start the study. Is that correct?
Yes, we've applied twice.
And, and they've denied both of them.
And all the plant money.
Uh, uh, just crazy. It's crazy. Now, let me ask you this, Tyler. We do all of this. Somehow we come up with the money to take care of this consent order. What, what would be the life expectancy of this new operation for us?
Typically, you know, new plants, uh, concrete structures and stuff, I mean, they have wastewater plants, you know, they endure, you know, more chemicals than, you know, your typical concrete structure, hydrogen sulfide, et cetera. Uh, typical concrete structure plant, typical lifestyle is fifty years.
Fifty?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And again, that's of course, you know, doing proper O and N's on a year in, year out basis, having the money for that and just keeping, you know, equipment up to date, you know, there's always challenges that, but, you know, things like that, this should be a fifty-year minimum plan, in my opinion, that you put in place and keep rolling when you cut the, cut the tape on it.
And, and really that's probably the life expectancy of a new, brand new plant also? Or they, well, they've got the same treatments.
Yeah, it, you know, again, it's, fifty is kind of the standard when, you know, just expectancy of a plant, equipment and stuff like that, structural components. Again, how well it's maintained, O and N, take care of year in, year out. And get better bank for your bubble.
That's why, what am I, what am I doing with my surprise? That one point seven million dollars uh, a year for fifty years just on getting it where we need to get it based on these figures right here, not counting operation and maintenance. So not cheap to run.
And back to what Kevin said, we kind of, uh, did our facility plan preliminary engineering report. We put a matrix system together, breaking down all the different technology out there. Um, you know, again, like you said, energy consumption was a big one that we made sure, uh, we detailed out and put in front of the city to kind of see if they were to move that direction, what kind of energy output you'd be getting out of it. Uh, Kevin said it's very minimal power used out, out of the site, which is benefit to the city. Given kind of the direction the state's making y'all go, where there was understanding where greater power consumption was about to be used. So we definitely accounted for that, went through the selection and laying out the sites and things like that.
I think about those five or so years ago, I, uh, got Mike to run a total kilowatt for the water plant and wastewater plant to see if we could run solar. We got an estimate for that and there was room on the, on the water plant site to put enough panels to run both of them. And, uh, it just, you know, we just had other fish to fry, so it kind of got stuck in the back, but, but it, it was a possibility because of what we spend per month on, on running, running these plants and power.
But that would have been running the old plant, not the amount of power that would take to run.
I would, I would assume so. I mean, I don't even know.
Right.
Kind of an idea of power consumption total based on horsepower and things, based on data we have. I could, you know, tinker differently up or down, you know, once you kind of put more pen on paper and scrutiny, tighten the bolts on a lot of these designs.
Certainly, this, whatever we could put up, you know, go, go solar, but.
Did they give you any kind of cost estimate put in? What the O and M and everything else?
That was a long time ago. It's like one and a half million dollars.
I remember several years, several years before you brought that up, the city had the accounting. There was an article, you know, in the Star, it was, but the county was going to work with one of the power companies. The, you know, thousands, thousands.
Lishing property.
Yeah, and it was going to generate more power than the old county concerned, but I guess that fell to the waste.
Alrighty, well, let's move on if there's anywhere else to move. So, uh, uh, we got any more questions? We, we, we appreciate you guys coming for sure and the work you've done. And now you're, you're complete with our project. Is that correct?
This is, I don't consider us done yet. No, sir. We've kind of got, you know, waiting to receive final comments and then submitting that, uh, to SRF. So I mean, in my mind, you know, we're still working with the city to.
Thank you.
Get all this done. So I don't want to go to think that we're done just because we're here to submit it.
Yeah.
When we gather that these comments, speak twice about these comments, uh, how does that work?
It's going to work. You know, we've kind of met beforehand, you know, we've given the draft to them. Of course, you know, the time I was submitted was a little bit before Christmas holidays. We're on New Year's, so we're waiting on comments back on that. If they had any questions on that, you know, want to finalize whatever comments they may have on the reports and then once we receive those, you know, we're ready to button those up and, you know, submit it to SRF. But as Jim said, it doesn't appear they're going to start doing selection on projects till August. So what kind of feedback will we get from SRF? On our submission, I'm not quite sure.
I think it puts us in a better posture to earlier to be able to say, well, we, we've already submitted what we need to submit. It's now over here in this department's hands, whereas I think we lose that ability if we sit back and, and just wait at this point. I think we need to move forward.
So I'm not, to your point, you know, I'm not saying our submissions will be perfect. They may have an RAI request for additional information they need. So it's probably best to put it in their hands now and say, what else do we need to do with it? So we can get it finalized so you can.
So it'll go from you to?
Plus to the state.
What department?
Uh, it's going to be our SRF. I guess the state.
Okay. So the money people get it and then they're going to take input, I guess, from DEP.
And it may be a good idea to submit this to them, uh, now. And then I don't know if we have a meeting over in Pensacola. Like you said, that's in our backyard too. So we'll be at that meeting. Uh, you'll kind of at least come through that. Maybe they'll have comments they can give us, you know, to us directly while we're there with them. Yeah.
Well, the timing is good as far as calendar timing, because the Florida Legislature is in second week of committees right now. So we should have, hopefully we have Clark and his team, uh, attending these meetings and and can start speaking to the players. Uh, the key to it is the governor's office. The governor wants it done and it's done. And then if you have a connection with the speaker and the president of the chambers, that's, that's what we have to have happen. Uh, and we haven't cracked that nut at this point.
Then I know we talked about kind of Triumph, SRF, uh, we talked a little bit earlier when we met, you know, we, two reports we put together was the preliminary engineering report, which is kind of the baseline for us on how we need to push this project forward from a more design technical standpoint. Facility plan incorporates some of that stuff in there, but then it comes into more, you know, dollar figures and stuff to help the funding agency, which that report would be submitted to SRF. The preliminary engineering report won't be submitted. But the P E R is already formatted in a way for the city to submit it to rural development if they wanted to go after any kind of fundings like that. Um, so I know that hasn't been talked about, but maybe an option too. Y'all may want to look at different sources for grants. You know, we have a report we put together for rural development that can be submitted to them and maybe some kind of feedback and grants that maybe the city is able to receive.
Has our grant writers submitted any requests or applications for funding that would apply to this project?
Yes, sir. The only two that I know of that was been applied before was by staff on the two before. No, sir. The only two that I know of that was been applied before was by staff on the two before. This, we're just now to that point. Yes, sir.
So we can get, we get engaged and grant writers?
So Clark's got this information now.
Clark was saying, well, we can have what you have in front of you today. So the thinking was coming today is we want to make sure y'all knew before we went out there full steam ahead of what we were in it. Cause y'all going to get questioned about this, that we go ahead with the SRF funding, go ahead and apply for it, see what they tell us. Let's also see about Toronto. Let's see what they tell us and let's get a meeting in front of D E P. Let's look for these funding sources where they may be and also have Clark looking for other funding sources in our grant.
Rural development.
And in my mind, Clark is our lobbyist.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying he's also tasked with applying for grants?
No, sir. He's just kind of our eyes and ears because when we're talking with, uh, with him the other day on there now, it looks like the focus is really going to be on the departments themselves to really get into those offices there to find out what grants are available. And he should be able to have access to that because he has boots on the ground that know where, where to look.
But that's the state side.
Yes, sir.
What I'm referring to is we have a grant writer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And they have the ability to reach out and apply for federal funding.
Absolutely. Yes, we need our grant writer.
The Army Corps of Engineers, uh, is definitely involved in the dyke that protects the St. Joseph Bay. Uh, then in my mind, that's a, that's a huge concern. Uh, so I would like our grant writers to apply for federal funding to assist us with this project.
True. I know when, when y'all brought them on a couple of weeks ago, there was a list and that was one of the items on there that concern was trying to find the funding, what's the least for the treatment plant. So.
Right, for the state side. I want to attach it, uh, to our other grant writers and task them with seeking funds federal.
Sure. They should be looking state and federal, yes, sir.
Yeah.
So what part of this are we required to submit to D E P at present time?
I wish it was this size, but it's a few hundred pages. So.
This is, so, so we are responsible for sending them something that says we are working on it.
Yes, sir. And that's why this, all this is right here is this, these posters. So we, we got the, the big boys, uh, we said those are Kevin and Jim, to them, like I said, there are a few hundred pages. So, yeah, those, those are ready. Like I said, comments, tighten those up and then push that out.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
We need to let them know that we are, we go visit with them. We, they, they need to have that front of them that we've done all this. All right. Anything else, guys? You guys need questions for us?
We're always available. So if there's any other questions that come up, you know, feel free to direct them to Jim, Kevin, or direct it to us, whatever. Like I said, we're here to help y'all uh, to the finish line. So we appreciate it. You do, that's all we can do. And again, thank y'all.
Good friend.
Having us to come up here. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll be in touch. We're trying to set that Pensacola meeting up and, uh, and, uh, go.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. We'll be adjourned.